Oh, sorry.
I declare this to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure a productive meeting. The select board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning that the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment. But the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions and comments are to be directed to the chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be two minutes allotted for comment from any single person on any single topic. The rules of procedure are posted in the town hall and are available for anyone to review. Thank you.
So, members in attendance tonight, we have Bob Jones, Mike Beecher, Jessica Van Orte, Perry Brown, Rich Hewlett, and I'm Kristin Powers. And thank you for everybody who signed in in person and on Zoom tonight. A friendly reminder, if you address or would like to speak this evening at the meeting, please make sure to address the board's chair, who's Mike Beecher. And I think that's that. I don't have any addition of the additions to the agenda. However, I did put down the Tyler Technologies reappraisal draft contract on the agenda, but I've not seen that yet come through, so I think we can delete that. Maybe I can follow up with the assessor's office to see where we're at with that. And did anybody else have any additions or deletions?
No, but I see someone just entered the waiting room.
And then we've got three sets of minutes that need to be approved tonight. So there's the regular meeting minutes from our last meeting, which was February 6th, and then the two special meeting minutes from January 30th and 31st. And then there was one edit on the minutes of the 30th to Michael Allen's comment, just clarifying, just with some clarification that Jessica provided. So the motion that I propose would be to approve the minutes for that, for January 30th, with one edit to Michael Allen's comment, and then the other two as printed.
All right, I'll make such a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Code? Carried. Thank you. Nobody pre-requested? Any announcements? No announcements. Zoning administrators report? Nancy?
Yes, and I have nothing to report of.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Planning commission have anything?
We'll meet next week.
They'll meet next week, okay. Road foreman?
So Rick provided a report. So the highway department, oh, I wrote it down already. The highway department has continued to stockpile gravel. They've been grading the roads as the weather permits. They've been maintaining and repairing equipment as necessary, have begun cutting brush on select roads, and have continued to perform winter road maintenance as weather requires. Then I had put down the signing of a grant agreement. So we received an email, I'm a little, I'm trying to get some more clarification. So we received an email from, somebody from the Agency of Transportation, I believe. So there was a grant that we were issued back in 2022, and then it was for better backroads, I believe. And there was an opportunity to, let's see, I've got it here. Sorry, it was for grants and aids for fiscal year '23. The award start date was July 1st of '22, and the end date was supposed to be September of 2023. There was an extension on that that got us out to September of 2024, and we received an email stating that we hadn't signed the grant amendment form. So we should, it was through the Agency of Transportation. So we could go ahead and sign that. However, when I was looking through my emails, it appears that this, I think, was the Wait Hill Road project that we did, and all of that reimbursement, the reimbursement request had already been submitted. So I'm not entirely sure why this is necessary. The original person that sent me this request to have us sign this, when I emailed him back seeking some clarification on it, he had an automatic email reply that said now all of those, my emails should go to somebody else. So I'm not sure, maybe he's not still with them. So my thoughts, I put in a couple phone calls and emails, but my thoughts would be that maybe we should sign this because perhaps they just need this on record, that we wanted this amendment. And then, but it seems like Julie had worked with Dale prior to his departure to get everything completed for that, and I had copies in my email. Hi. So anyhow, that's what I have for you there. I'm not sure what, how you all feel about that, but.
Do you know when the reimbursements were submitted?
I believe it was January, like sometime last month.
Okay.
So.
So then, then we probably did need the extension because the extension would have been from...
Yeah, the work was definitely, definitely completed this, the end of this past summer, which would have been in the window, but the time for reimbursement wasn't submitted, so.
Then I would think they probably just need this for their paperwork.
It probably couldn't hurt to have it. So this is the form. If anybody wants to see, this was the, these are the two things. And then that's the agreement.
That's from Mike to sign it.
It looks like if we decide to sign this, it's just got the one line for signature, so it would probably be you.
So I get it.
And in that little packet is, that Perry has, is the original form. I think I put a sticky note on it that said "old." My sophisticated note-taking, but.
The amendment is just to the date.
The timeframe, right?
Yeah, the amendment is just to the timeframe because we were given an extra year to complete the work.
Yeah, that's just Mike's on the last thing.
Not mine, so there's, there's that.
So it sounds like all we really gotta do is just sign this because we got an extension and...
Yeah, I would say if somebody wanted to make a motion to sign it, just to, just because.
I think it makes sense to sign it, honestly.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we utilized the extended time.
We've already spent the money, so.
I'll make that motion to sign that amendment.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You post? Pass or not?
And then the next thing that I have for highway, so there were some emails that went around that I think everybody got, but we were sent our spring mailer from Vtrans. And so that's the annual required paperwork, which includes the certificate of compliance for road and bridge standards, their updated contact information for select board members. Talks about what the grant applications are going to be like, the reimbursement forms, so on and so forth. So this is always done, generally every year there are people from Vtrans that come down and help us to do this. So they called me and they had sent this email and they wanted to set up this meeting. But my thought was that it would be in the best interest to wait until we have a secure direction in terms of who might be completing all this paperwork for the highway department. So I have been in communications with the folks up at the state to do this. And then when it came to also, you know, it wanted an updated contact information for the select board members and so on and so forth, then I just thought that made more sense to do after we get through town meeting. So probably in early April or end of March.
Sounds very reasonable.
Put this on the agenda and then we'll have to go through this whole process again. Just FYI, if you get any questions, we're not dropping the ball on it. We're just trying to be proactive about it. And who wants to talk about the truck?
Yeah, so our, the 17 Mack went to State Line in New Hampshire for some diagnostic work. That truck had had, had some injection pump issues, or injector issues, and it may have caused some damage to the head as well. I feel like there's a possibility that it can be an insurance claim. I don't know if you handed out the estimate or not. And this quote is worst-case scenario, but it's pretty significant. I think there's good grounds for an insurance claim on it. So that's where we're at with that truck. And I don't know what our deductibles are or anything like that, but we have to put ahead, all the injectors, they already know are damaged. And they're thinking that the head is damaged as well, so it's...
So that's a cylinder head?
Yeah, it's a cylinder head, yep.
The, the new truck, did that go to the outfitter yet or not? Is that the outfitter?
Yeah.
We're looking at, how long?
Uh, they haven't given me a hard date. I wouldn't think it would be more than, you know, a month, month and a half. Because Viking claimed that they had a slot for that truck when it came in.
Okay.
That's how they work with ATG. ATG orders these trucks, and when they order them, you know, they make the slot at Viking, so.
Okay, so that's good.
And that is the newer of the two, the two Macks, so.
So we definitely want it to serve us for a long time yet?
Yeah, yeah.
How could it be an insurance claim? Is it because it was caused by damage from like rocks or something, or?
Uh, it was a mistake that was made.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and it wasn't, you know, yeah, it's a pretty legitimate, I think, claim.
So I reached out to Deb to see about how to go about initiating an insurance claim if necessary. So I, we believe that it would just be initiated through the VLCT, and then Deb wasn't entirely, needed to double-check because it was later in the afternoon, but unsure if whether Deb herself or if Julie might be the point of contact for the town. And then from there, if the VLCT has any more significant questions or needs details on it, it could be something that, you know, the foreman or the liaisons could provide more info on, but it's a fairly straightforward process to initiate a claim, if that's the direction that you all want to go.
And, you know, the reason I think that it would be a claim is it, it was not, it wasn't because of a lack of maintenance. It was just a mistake that was made. So we'll see what happens with that, but I think it's worth a try.
Yeah, any portion that they would pay would help out, you know?
Dave, did you have your hand up there?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you an FYI there. That grant paperwork is due by April 15th, so.
The spring mailer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that, you got your contact information and all that stuff, but you just send that right in with your class to grant.
Perfect, thank you.
Due by the 15th.
Thank you for that.
Is there anything else going on in the town? Highway department or?
Well, they've just been hauling some gravel and Kristin, I think, has a...
I read it.
Oh, did you?
She's already, pretty much gone, gone through all that. They seem to be on top of doing, doing what they can do with the weather that we got, so. Assessors' report? Is there anything from the assessors? And nothing, nothing from Tyler Technologies? Town clerk's memo?
Yeah. So there are two excess weight permits for signature. There's a notification from the ANR, which, here you go, regarding an environmental notice bulletin. The town report mailing went smoothly. Accessible voting machine was tested today and the tabulator will be tested tomorrow. There will be a cemetery meeting in the auditorium on March 6th, which is the same night as the select board organizational meeting. Have a good evening, respectfully submitted, Deb. Which...
That doesn't really matter because we'll be able to be down here, the organizational meeting on Wednesday, so.
Yeah, but Tuesday we'll have to be upstairs.
Tuesday we'll have to go up there, yep.
Yes, so.
Well, it looks like someone is in the waiting room again.
Yes, but so the, the board will, it's election night. Monday night is informational town meeting at the school.
Thank you.
Tuesday is elections.
So there's a select board meeting here Tuesday.
Yes, but it'll be upstairs. Lot going on because voting will be downstairs, so the meeting will be upstairs in the auditorium.
And, and the next night is the organizational meeting, is that right?
No, but it will. It's a special meeting, so it doesn't have to go out until, there's different rules, but we should acknowledge that. That, so, so the select board meeting on Tuesday, March 5th, is going to be upstairs in the auditorium. And then Wednesday, March 6th, is the audit, is the special organizational meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, now Jennifer's here also. Everyone's, everyone's showing up on Zoom.
Okay.
Mercury containing lamp. Daniel Mercury lamp.
Yeah, we're just doing the clerk's memo right now. We just read through it. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
Um, I don't think so. Other than election, there's not a whole lot going on else with me. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I think everything, everything I've seen so far is going along smooth, so.
Bob, did you sign the permits?
Okay, no, I guess we're all good, Deb. Thank you very much for joining.
Okay, I need to talk about, I heard, I came in at the end there about the Cemetery Association having the meeting upstairs.
Right, yeah.
Okay, all right, then I'm also.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, treasurer's report?
Yes, hold on just one sec. So from the treasurer's office, there are two warrants this week. Payroll is $9,715.92. Accounts payable is $44,881.89. General fund monies are $24,117.74. Highway fund, $21,889.82. And wastewater fund is $8,590.25. Tax collection time was very busy. Julie, we'll have the collection break down at the next meeting. There is a bill, which is S-55 in the Vermont Senate, that would require all open meetings to be available as in-person and virtual. There will be a testimony, there will be testimony opportunities this week. If you would like to submit something in support or opposition to this potential new law, I have the info available in my office where testimonies should be submitted. Respectfully submitted, Julie Mack. Payroll warrant 24043 for $9,715.92. And accounts payable warrant 24044 for $44,881.89 are the two motions that are needed this evening.
I'll go ahead and make the motion for warrant 24043 and 24044.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Carried. Frank, you had a comment?
Yeah, we don't, so the select board meeting will be, we're pretty much doing what their, that bill would say anyways. The planning commission would be doing it. Would that apply to this library board and any other boards around town that they'd have to do in person and virtual? Huh? Any public meeting?
Anybody who's subject to open meeting law.
Yeah. Any, anything else about what the treasurer has left for us? Okay. Emergency management? Nothing?
Nothing from Bob.
Health officer, do you got anything to share with us tonight, Jennifer?
Um, I do. I have taken reports of three dogs in about a week's time, but that's it.
Okay. Three dog bites. Three, three separate cases?
Yes.
The same dog or the three different dogs?
Yeah.
Okay.
They, uh, part, one of them, took one of the reports. Yeah, but they were all three different dogs, three different areas of, uh, Pollitt. Two in West Pollitt, one in Pollitt.
All right, any questions for Jennifer? Okay, thank you for joining us, Jennifer. Wastewater Treatment Facility. And Julie's, was going over the Irving bills and she found that from January 18th to February 8th, we burned 600 gallons of fuel, of propane at the sewage treatment plant. And I was like, wow, that's crazy. So I called Jake, and Jake said that when he was working on the other heaters upstairs in the attic area, over the offices and the lab and the bathroom, the, the duct work for the furnace has been violated by some form of animal. All the, the insulation is ripped off it and stuff. And he also feels that that furnace is starting to show its signs of age that heats that area. So these are all things that we're going to need to address prior to next season. He said that unfortunately, that there wasn't anything he saw other. That was, that could be a leading contributor to the fact that we're losing a lot of heat up in that attic area.
How much do we normally burn? I mean, I assume less than that.
Right, I, I don't really know. I, I didn't, Julie didn't get it till last month. She was just going through it this afternoon and she texted me and she said, this seems pretty weird. So I called Jake to see if he had any opinions or anything. But that was, that was what we learned so far. I, I think at one point we did run the generator for a few hours when there was a power outage, but that certainly wouldn't...
And it hasn't been that cold.
Right, it certainly wouldn't show any kind of crazy portion. Frank, you, you're offering to take your new camera down there?
Jessica's got one, I've got one. We're looking to put some pictures up for the pre-town meeting so that people can see and we can take picture of the sewer plant, include a photo and see if there's...
Go down, go down there, go at it, Frank.
Yeah, figure it out.
Okay, so that's it. Wastewater, the new pump motor arrived. We just, they're just have to schedule insulation. Guess that's about it. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Facilities, anything to, uh, report on facilities? And school district? No report from the school district?
Uh, there was a report. Did we read it at the last meeting or when did we do that? Let me see. No, so on Wednesday, Julie submitted a school, Meadowway School District report. At the regular meeting on February 12th, we were fortunate to be joined by a group of Meadowway students who shared with us their thoughts on education. We have worked hard on community engagement and we're very excited to add student voice. The kids were very thoughtful and forthright, sharing their opinions with us. We monitored policy 2.4, financial planning and budgeting. An extensive time was spent discussing the impact of Act 127 and pending legislation intended to address problems arising from Act 127 implementation. The use of tax stabilization funds amounting to $179,235 was approved with the intention of a five-cent reduction on town tax rates, and we elected to move forward with voting on our budget on town meeting day regardless on incoming legislation. We will hold our annual meeting on February 28th at 7:00 PM at the Meadowway School. Our next regular board meeting will be March 11th at the Rupert Firehouse and on Google Meet. As always, we welcome public comment during our regularly scheduled meeting. That was submitted by Julie Mack, the Meadowway School District Board Chair.
Thank you very much. Older unfinished business. West Pollitt Property Development, former Dutchie Store.
I put that down after Marty came last.
Marty, Marty had some interest from someone, but I feel strongly that we shouldn't do anything with that property that, that could constrict any future modifications that we need to do to that sewer treatment plant. And we know we're going to have to do something different because it's not as good as it needs to be, so. Frank?
One of the endorsed concepts in the West Pollitt plan that we had Michael as the planner for...
Yeah, it's just a plan.
Was, was, just the plan was to have that, a part of the property that sewer plant wouldn't have to be using to be used.
But we don't know what the sewer plant has to use. We're not going to tie it down, in my opinion.
That's exactly right.
In my opinion, I'm going to fight anything that happens there until we figure out how to make the sewer work good.
Fully on board with it.
Okay.
First, and then...
Thank you.
Any remaining piece left over?
Yeah, when the dust settles, from the sewer plant working perfect, then we'll see what's left over.
You've got to have the sewer plant working, otherwise we're deep shit.
Any other older unfinished business? Is there any new business? How about public comment?
I have a question.
Yes. Go ahead, Jennifer.
I just wondered, the speed sign that was in West Pollitt that got knocked over, I think, by one of the storms? What's the status of that?
Oh, the speed limit sign.
The electronic one?
Yeah, by Frank's.
I didn't know it was knocked over. We'll let the highway...
Frank's speed limit sign was, was wrecked. It was laying there dead and they picked it up a couple weeks ago.
I will, we'll check in with the highway department.
Okay, excellent. And Ronnie Taylor asked me today that, um, somebody asked him about new flags for the monument. Is there any flags left?
For the monument, I got the flag last time.
You got the flag for the monument the last time? It wasn't anything that the town had here?
Don't need the flag.
Okay.
We are going to need new flags and staffs for before Memorial Day when we pull them up.
Okay, so Ronnie just sent me a text today about it, and I said, I try and remember, so I did. So we know that it didn't come with this group that we bought, so.
No.
How much would it be for that one for the monument?
I got it from Wendy's, Grand Ole Turb Street.
I remember that, because the fire departments are responsible for putting the flags up, but I'm pretty sure the town is responsible for purchasing the flags. but I'm pretty sure the town is responsible for purchasing the flags.
Right.
So if we need to.
Yeah, if we, if we, you just decide what we need and order it, you can, we can, the town will pay for it. I'll tell Ronnie you're on it. Thank you for that, though. Frank?
I saw Deb and Julie about this property thing. The state was telling me the wrong thing last time, remember? Uh, they said that I had until October 17th, three calls. They told me this and then they reneged on that. But I was fully under the impression of one thing, but they said it was another. And so then I got the fine that the select board would approve for late filing a homestead. When the state told me three times that it was, I was not late. And then they said technically you're late, but they admitted that, that they have recordings, my phone calls with them and admitted that they made a mistake telling me. Uh, so I'm wondering if, it doesn't go to abatement, I don't think. I think the select board has the option of just doing it and if they want, go, go to abatement. For the fine part, because I have no problem paying the tax if we have the tax go through. The only problem with that.
You're trying to get the, the fine?
It's like 40 bucks or something like.
Like 40 bucks, basically.
Forty some odd, some odd dollars, somewhere in there.
Anybody have any comments?
I mean, I guess I feel like it should probably go through abatement just because that's the process we have.
The established process, yep.
Okay, then you would.
Um, actually, this is a very different situation than an abatement request. Um, and there is a statutory procedure. Um, I think Julie made a copy of it and gave it to Frank. And I think that there needs to, in this particular case, because it's not a traditional abatement request, because it's not taxes per se, I think it needs to start with the assessors and then it goes to the select board. Um, it's very, very different. And I think probably what we'll need to do is give you who has the select board the same thing that was copied off and given to Frank.
Yes, that would be helpful, Deb, so we know what the statutory process is.
Yeah, because this is, this is a very different situation. Um, and Julie and I talked about it. Frank did come in and Julie had found the procedure and it does involve directly the select board. Um, I believe there might be a step after that. I don't have it in front of me, so I'm trying to just do it from memory. But Kristen, you have it?
Yeah, I've got it here. I'll make a copy.
Is there, is there somewhere I can find that electronically? Because I know if I have papers, I'll never look at it.
Probably. Ask Julie. If Julie found where it is, Julie can, it's in the link.
Because I, I know that if I have papers, they're sitting in the back of my truck. But when I'm at break time, I'll cruise through my emails and I'll look at that once in a while.
Is there anybody else have anything for the public comment? Dave?
Uh, highway department, further knowledge of the roads and stuff, I think you're doing all right. The only question I have is why would you call somebody in to help take care of 13 miles of black cop? When you have a man sitting right in West Pollitt that never got a phone call? The other guy drives 45 minutes on a good day to get here. To get here and then find out that they're not going to do anything with dirt, um, that's not very cost effective. Because I don't know if you guys, once he gets called, does he get paid his travel time? Or when he shows up at the shop?
When he punches in.
But still, I mean, that's a waste of his time. Come down here and spend maybe half an hour, 45 minutes to do whatever site Rick did through.
Well, you don't know if he wanted to work that day either.
Well, I did, I talked to him.
You talked to Rick?
No, I talked to Nathaniel.
But did you talk to Colby or Rick?
No, Colby's the one who got called in.
My suggestion would be talk to Rick. He's the foreman.
Well, he's the one who made the decision.
Right, but that may have been a decision or something that he had discussed with Colby prior to Saturday. You don't know, right? You're just assuming.
Well, I just like to know why that.
Once you know, then come to the board.
Somebody that's traveling 45 minutes one way.
He works for the town.
Exactly, I understand that.
So maybe something that they had agreed on before that day.
He didn't find out you weren't going to do the dirt until he got here.
Who's that, Colby?
Yes.
How do you know that?
Because Nathaniel told me that, because Colby told Nathaniel that.
Yeah, it's all hearsay, she said. What you need to do is talk to the foreman and get the real story.
Okay.
And then you can come back.
That's, that's fine, that's fine. As I said, I don't mind my taxes going up, but when I see them getting squandered.
Well, then you need to talk to the boss of the road crew.
And another thing, I've offered to give him aid and stuff as far as how to do things and, and stuff. Um, and I understand that, um, a member of the MB's group came over and ran a grader. Well, thank you for fixing switch rope. But now there's a berm this high of dirt flung straight down the shoulder of the road where the water can't even get off the road. If it was that bad, he should have just kept going, pushed it right over the side instead of.
Then we would have had a big issue with the landowner.
Uh, the town has a right of way down through there regardless.
Well, we're pretty wide there. We would have, you see the wad of mud there? We would have been thrown over the edge.
It'll slide down.
Have you talked to the, our road foreman about trying to give him some advice?
Yes, I have. He's actually got my phone over.
And what was his response to you?
That if he needed anything, that he would, he would definitely reach out.
So apparently he hasn't needed anything, but thank you for offering your, your support.
And also I noticed this week on my way home that the speed limit sign had been changed on the roof right by your front.
Yeah.
The 30 miles an hour. That's posted in this ordinance, it's 40 miles an hour until you get to Bobby Jones's place.
Well, we had just discussed that at a board meeting.
The school.
You can't just arbitrarily change the speed limit. It's got to have a traffic study. Um, it has to be posted 90 days. Once you guys make that decision, um, just last people that did it, traffic study was, uh, 2008. The sheriff's department did it for the town.
So that's a mistake that we made. I mean, I didn't, I didn't know that that was.
Well, it's just that as soon as we write a ticket there, so we get someone doing 45 through there and the judge is going to look at this, he's going to say, well, your ordinance says, and that ticket's gone.
Good information.
So we have to correct, do we have to correct that procedure then?
Yeah. You get the sheriff's department or, um, somebody come sit there and all they do is count cars and speed limits and they take like the 80th percentile. Um, then they go back and they see how many accidents have been in that area. Because we tried that before because it is a school zone through there. And they figure the school sits far enough off the highway that it doesn't, doesn't make a difference.
Can I ask, what, can I ask what year we did that study at the school and they wouldn't let us change it? Was that, is that there?
I don't know. The last study here was, um, the ordinance itself was 2002, but then 2008 they did it and in 2010 they adopted this.
Yeah, we went through a whole long, well, you, you're on.
Actually, sue names on here.
I'm sorry. Yeah, it was a big process.
When we, when we made that, when we made that vote, we didn't, we weren't aware of that procedure. Unfortunately, we didn't do enough research on that. So we'll, we'll work through that and, and try and get that so that it's a better, a safer zone through there, definitely, if we can. Does anybody else have anything for public comment? Sue?
Just got a short letter that Rhonda Schlangen wrote that she'd like me to read.
Okay.
Um, so the Pauli Select Board and the Library Board, us, Rhonda Schlangen from West Pollitt. I'm writing to express my concern once again about the governance of our community library. Over the past six months, I've joined dozens of other community members in raising questions about transparency and accountability at the library board. The library is a community good. The board has been entrusted with the commu, by the community to govern it. It must do so within prescribed rules and guidelines. It must do so in a way that reflects our community's values and ethics. Concerns about the board's capacity to govern were opened by the events surrounding the dismissal of the library director in late 2023. Loiter scrutiny of the board's practices has only raised more and broader questions. These questions include, have all board members been trained in proper rules, guidelines and procedures, including specific obligations for officers? The need is also reflected in the 2019, 2023 strategic plan. What measures is the board trying to strengthen its own practice? What measures is the board taking to strengthen its own practices, including training on basic governance and reviewing its procedures in terms of transparency, fair employment practices and other aspects of ethical and equitable conduct? This measure would be built on a specific requirement of the 2019, 2023 strategic plan. What are the board's processes to demonstrate accountability and assess and improve its performance? This should include a 360 degree performance review with the library director and the community. The board's past responses to these and many other questions have been disappointing. I urge members of the Pollitt Library Board to consider how its ways of working are undermining the public trust. I encourage the board to take action, to reflect on and correct its own performance and communicate the measures it is taking to the community. Signed, Rhonda Schlangen. Thank you.
The only other thing I got is this bankruptcy court thing. Oh, that, I'll, I'll share that one with you too. But bankruptcy court apparently has to do with opiates. Opiate claims. I didn't even, I didn't look that over yet. Did you look it over?
I haven't looked it over, no.
I don't even know that, that we even signed up for any of this stuff or if it's just, if they're just fishing.
Should we look at it first or should we have our lawyer look at it?
Probably.
We should probably look at it first.
Probably before. Would you be interested?
I could look at it, yeah.
Thank you so much.
I'm a pretty good speed reader.
Oh, good. Because I know that I'd be sleeping after like one page, so I don't know what that one is. Something from. Select Board Assentos.
Construction sand and gravel. It's a mineral information form that we are supposed to fill out for the US Geological Survey.
Okay, so you can look it over.
I'll read the small print.
Bring it back.
Yep, we'll do.
If we, something we need to deal with.
Okay.
Okay, nothing else going on for public comment? Well.
Could I just ask Jessica a quick question?
Yeah.
Um, you were going to look into, I, it was only two weeks ago.
Yeah.
V L T C.
I have not gotten any further with that, but it's still on my list.
Thank you.
Okay, do we want to go into executive session?
I'll make that motion to go into executive session.
I'll second. And it's to discuss.
Labor relations.
Labor relations agreements with employees.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried.